I know. Let's live in the spirit of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this school board meeting District 544 to order. And Clark, will you take your place?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Lindsey.
Here.
Ms. Hermes present, Stephen Biggison.
We have a court. Can we get a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to John and Thea Branson for their donation of a bass to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. Could someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer a resolution, move for adoption.
In a second.
I'll second.
And Clark, will you take role on that?
Yes. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole, yes. Matthew Lindsey.
Yes.
Ms. Hermes, yes. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right, we'll move into our reports then. And our first report is Deb Suter, Kendall Hansen, and Clarice Stephan talking about France 2024 trip.
So we're here to report about our trip that we just returned from 12 days ago. So we departed from Minneapolis Airport. We took an eight-day whirlwind tour of France. When I first organized this trip, my goal was to make memories with daughter, mother-daughter, father, daughter, son, possibly grandparent. And we were able to do all of that and more. So Claire came with her mother, Kendall came with her mother, but we also had a grandpa with his grandson from Glenwood and an 80-year-old couple from Hennings. If you recall, Mr. Drake, Clinton called you last summer when he heard about the trip on the radio and he said, "I'm going there. My dream has been to go to Normandy beaches." So I don't want to talk a whole lot about Clinton. I want these two to share some of the experiences that they had. But Clinton being able to see Normandy beaches with his wife to stand on that ground was phenomenal and we experienced that. The trip went smoothly without a hitch. We had 43 people, if you can believe that. But we combined with a group from St. Cloud. We're about 50/50 students, parents. And so the teacher from St. Cloud was extremely organized with her checklist. Every time we had to do a plane change, a bus check, she had all of us on it. And then the group from the city's Adventures Tour Arlette was amazing. So in eight days, we probably did what I've done before in 12 days. It was from dawn to dusk we were going. Oh, it wasn't for the lighthearted. All of us walked 38 miles in three days. That included Clinton and his wife, a little bit longer back. They did all of it without complaint. So I'm gonna have Claire and Kendall tell you all about their favorite parts of the trip and have any other questions.
I'm Clara and my favorite part was probably just kind of walking around Paris and just as I was walking, you could just see the culture everywhere and just like how different it is from where we live and just getting to experience that firsthand was really amazing. Another one of my favorite parts was San Ralo and it's kind of a gated city or walled city on the English Channel. And I got to swim in a pool there where the tide goes from the ocean and then the ocean is just like in this pool area and then it's really cold in the English Channel. But I got to swim all the way out into a diving board and jump off like 11 to 12 feet diving board a couple times and that was pretty amazing experience.
I really liked Normandy. All the history was really interesting to see. I mean, you learn about it in all your classes, but seeing it up front in front of you, it's pretty amazing. And our last day, we took a little river tour down the Seine and you get to roll by all the museums that you saw earlier in the tour and it was pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Did you have any questions for us? Nobody asked. Did we eat snails? We did not. But Kendall was our muscle queen. She devoured a whole thing of mussels. We tried lots of different foods and enjoyed that.
What are some new museums that you did see?
For me, the Orangery, going to Giverny Monet's Gardens. Some of the other museums I have seen before, but you see it in a different light. What were some of the museums that you really enjoyed?
The Louvre was pretty cool and then Musée d'Orsay was really fun to see all the famous paintings.
So parlez-vous français? Did you speak French as much as you could or did you? I mean, it's different now too because you can, you have translation things and you have, there's more people in France that speak English than ever before. Did you try, did everybody get to use their?
Well, here's some background. Kendall took, studied the IQ Academy with me. And that was a year ago. So you're kind of put on the spot. But I'm speaking for you, Kendall, but she did say that. She could understand a lot of what they were saying in colors and things like that. But pretty much I was the translator, but that was kind of fun too for me, you know, like if they're like, "Help me," something like that.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
But yes, you're at the Presidencies, there's quite a bit of English in the smaller towns more so.
Was this your first time with this tour group?
It was. It was. So I had that opportunity to experience, you know, how well organized. My goodness, the last four nights were in different hotels. I thought, "How is that gonna work?" You're taking all those people out the bus, all their luggage, checking into. It was, they had us into our rooms within 10, 15 minutes. Well organized. Good, good trip. Thank you so much to the school board for approving it. That was really great to have your support. The community support, Mary Madison offering to do what they did with Community Ed to advertise it, allow us to have our meetings. And there was support along the way. So that was very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then our next report is Mary Madison from Community Ed.
This is fun to hear her report because, yes, we did help her. She came and she said, "Can you?" And I said, "Sure." I like any opportunity that is given to us. We provide leadership resources and support services in Community Ed to develop and sustain leading-edge programs and services. We believe the role of the community education is to share awareness and accessibility to quality opportunities and resources that are inclusive of the needs of all the Community Ed members from birth to senior citizens. The Community Education Advisor Council is committed to supporting and serving our community. And there, a lot of what I do and plan, it's not just by me. I bring people together. We sit at table and we discuss what we're gonna do. This past year, we reached over 19,000 people through direct mailing, brochures, classes, services, programs. We've reached activities and athletics. Community Ed is provided by the Fergus Falls School District as an efficient and effective way to offer residents of all ages the opportunity for lifelong learning. Each year, we serve over 35 community, each year, over 35 community agencies work collaboratively with community education and co-sponsoring a number of events. To date, we've served 128 communities. People have come into our areas and we have 11 states that were a part of some of the program that we do. DWI Safety Seminar, they're offered five times a year through Community Ed. Minnesota Department of Public Safety, DWI Clinic Number 28A. This is how it's offered. This is a collaborative partnership with Otter Tail County Human Services, Fergus Falls Police Department, Otter Tail County Attorney Office, and Otter Tail County Court Administration. Again, anytime we do something, we're trying to ensure that people can travel to Fergus Falls rather than traveling out to other places. We also offer a variety of classes that aid in economic development. We've got computer classes, starting your own daycare. That would be Lisa Spangler, child passenger safety classes, cars, health, heart saver and pediatrics, full and refresher, Suits and AHT, sudden, unexpected instant death and abuse of head trauma. Parents Forever is a class that has been offered through Community Ed for 27 years. We were the original pilot site. This program is a collaborative effort of Otter Tail County Court Administration, the Otter Tail County Judges, and it's for parents that are experiencing divorce, separation, or a change in custody. After completing the course, parents, we hope they'll be able to understand the family transition journey and how each member will be affected, recognize the role of self-care parenting, child relationships and co-parenting, and child well-being, identify internal and external resources and strategies of how to leverage these resources to promote resiliency for all involved. Last year, we offered 14 classes or events for adults with disabilities. Again, this is a committee that I bring together and they do the planning, I facilitate it. The strength of the program is only as strong as the people that are involved. Last week, I was at Stroke Support Group. They do, 30 years ago, someone came into my office and asked if I'd help them start a stroke support group. It's only as strong as what they put into it. I helped them and it's totally their program. I sit at the table with them and everything, but it was, it's still a very good group of people. So we meet everyone's needs. The next one was Stroke Support Group and it's from April to October. Total attendance is about 160 people, duplicated count. Computers, defensive driving, general interests, and other classes are offered during the daytime hour. And this report doesn't even touch the classes that we offer. Also, our facility, which has been remodeled, and I would welcome anyone to stop in and see us, was used 411 times last year. And that's probably a conservative estimate because we have people from the school coming and going. We offer an ACT prep class, which is a five-hour workshop. Also during the 23-24 school year, 200 students completed the District 544 Driver's Education Classroom and 200 completed behind the wheel. Community Ed offers permit testing. In October 2020, we applied to administer the web-based Class D knowledge test to driver's education students that go through our classroom and upon completion, they can take the test. We were approved to administer the test in the year of 2023. We tested about 220 kids and we're still testing. And when I leave today, we've got tests that are gonna be administered over there. A point of impact is offered, it was offered in April and this is a state requirement. We can't mandate the parents take the class, but we have to offer it. It's for parents and teens who are in driver's education. Community Ed, we send weekly reports for the scheduling of transportation for classroom field trips, extracurricular, and staff usage. And I believe we try to reach out to those who need extra help is at the core of what Community Ed is all about. We're the great equalizer. Sometimes people need a little extra help and homework help is offered before and after school during the school year. I always say Community Ed is fast, friendly, and flexible. We put structure into an idea and this could not have been, could not have been or be achieved without the team effort of Amy, Office Secretary. Adopt a Class, we have 58 Fergus Falls businesses that adopted and donated $100 to elementary classrooms. I cannot say enough about the generosity of the businesses who gave $100 each year to support the program that pairs a business with a classroom teacher. And this is something new. I was asked last August if I would sign off on two school districts and I'm not gonna disclose who they are for their state report. I met with the coordinators and the superintendent and the fee payment and I did visit with Jeff Drake, Superintendent Drake. I decided that that would just be rolled into Community Ed because it was, it would be difficult probably finding the right time to meet with them. You know, we did things via Zoom and so it was rolled in and that came into Fund Four. Also, the growth in Community Ed programs can be attributed to the development of strong schools and community partnerships. I've listed some things below on your sheet. Otter Pride Night, and I just told Matt that the, everything is ordered for them. They're in our office. And that's the first homecoming game. It's September 8th, I believe, and pom-poms are given out to the kids. And I got them ordered because it's such an early game. Usually it's later. Career Expo, fall of 2023, I secured funds for transportation costs for area schools to attend the expo. They have been contacted for this year. The strength of community cannot just be by that community alone. It has to be by the surrounding areas and everything. And we want to ensure that everyone knows they have a place at the table in the future when they complete their education. Andy Towers Hills, this was an interesting year. There was a lot of warmth and they were terrific. They made snow and we were able to ski 11 evenings from December 8th to March 8th. And we had about 35 students per trip. Synchronized Swimming Show, that was attended by about 600 people. Amanda Thormanson is at the helm. She's excellent. She's a role model for students and we really appreciate her skills. Aquatics, we have had lifeguard training, lifeguard recertification, water safety instructor, and a diving camp was offered to help with the fall swim program. Lego Club, that's a partnership with the University of Minnesota Extension. We have about 30 to 40 kids that attend monthly and they're really good. The only thing, we can count maybe three or five Legos that are left each time, but they clean up very well. ATV Safety Class, that's a partnership with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Hannah Woods is the instructor. We've got a Fergus Falls Rifle Club that meets every Tuesday, starting in September and goes till the end of April. Volleyball girls in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, we had 95 participate in the fall of 2023. Coach Sabrina Noon and varsity girl members conducted the camp. Cross-country, boys and girls in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, 38 participated in the fall of 2023. Nikki Weldy and varsity team members conducted the camp. Youth Firearms Safety, we have a little lull in there a few years ago and Matt and Bob Kraus, we had a training session, a regional one. We hosted it and everything and we're very thankful to them. We have 40 kids that participated in that. Blast is a visitor training class. We've had 33 students and also 14 students, so over 50. Mary Johnson is the trainer. She also teaches all our adult CPR classes. She's solid. And so anyone who has a child that goes to Blast, they come out knowing what they can do and when they should call for help and everything. Also, youth snowmobiles safety, Hannah Woods is the instructor. It was canceled this year due to lack of snow. Self-defense training for women, that was sponsored by Someplace Safe Community Ed and the Fergus Falls Police Department. We had 60 participants and I'm working on something for youth, which was a quest and I think we talked. It didn't happen this spring, but I will make sure it happens this fall and everything. Also, Playbuster Trap Team, we had 51 students. We have the Fishing League that we helped them. Again, remember, we put structure into an idea. School of Fish, we had 36 participants and that's the Fergus Falls Fish and Game Club. They got reels, rods and reels, tackle box, also a cap and everything. And the cost of the program was offset by the Fergus Falls Fish and Game Club. Archery, that is something new. We finished year two and France from the Minnesota DNR, Minnesota Deer Hunting Association, Lake Area Gobblers, Otter Tail Power Company made it possible. And the two at the helm are David Sanderson and also Jeff Struck and many other instructors have been trained. These students participated in seven archery tournaments last year and five students went to the State Archery Tournament in Mankato. There are plans on the books and I've had conversations with Derek Abrams to host an event at our school this February and everything. And I said, "I've got mine done. We are meeting now to put structure into it." United Way Backpack Program, I can't say enough about sending our kids off so they have a sense of belonging in our school and everything. And kids receive a black backpack every Friday, certain that need it, with food to get them through a weekend. And anyway, we do it twice a year in the fall near Thanksgiving and in the spring, which was typically, we call it spring break, it was Easter weekend, longer weekends. And they're given to 148 students. So this is something that we send them off with and everything. The last page I'd like to just share with you is early childhood. It's just an overview. We put this together every year for Community Ed Advisory Council and it indicates the projected revenue, local levy and home visiting levy, and projected fundraising. And they're a master at fundraising and everything. They, there are classes, five mornings, three evenings, and two afternoons. ECFE Funding allocations will increase in 2024, this year, and also 2026 and it's tied to the Gen Ed formula. We increased our census numbers by using kindergarten averaging methods. And the next one is Otter Preschool. Is a public program for children ages three to five. This program is a collaboration of school readiness and early childhood special ed. And for 2023, 2024, we served 151 children. Our funding is under the school readiness budget with tuition from parents and early learning scholarships. We're a four-star parent-aware rated program. To date, we have 108 students enrolled. That was last week. It could have even changed. It was the middle of last week I got those figures. Our United Way Care Visitor Program, we're in year 2024, 2025. We are in year one of the United Way Grant that serves 14 childcare providers and a total of 126 children. Our visits are in person. Applications were due in February. They were submitted. Interviews were in March and we were notified of allocations in May of 2024. $7,500 for each year, which is a big increase. It's only been $7,500 for two years. So we're thrilled. Without childcare, people can't go to work. And this is economic development at its best. Other fundraising and revenue sources are, believe it or not, fundraising is a critical part of our program, supplemental for supply needs, grocery receipts from service food, special popcorn fundraiser they have in the fall of the year. 544 Grant, it is due the first Friday in October. They will apply for that. 544 Wish List, they will apply. They applied at the end of May for the next school year. And Adopt a Class, Bea and I was doing the program. I decided they needed to be grandfathered into it. And of all our people, they needed probably the most. And so there's six classroom teachers and that's $600. They have a scholarship book fair and then they also do a notebook, which is children's artwork. It's a great gift-giving thing around Christmas time and everything. So are there any questions?
Not so much a question, but I guess I'm the treasurer and the Community Ed Fund is always, it's always doing well. I just want to say thank you for what you do, not just on the financial end, but for everything. I mean, you're doing a great job and I think we recognize that and appreciate everything, you and your staff too. So thank you.
I thank you and I appreciate what you people do. Superintendent Drake heard me. We were together at a thing at M State and I said, "If you don't like what you're doing," it was to a group of business people, "Go find a job someplace else." I love what I do and I really do. And I thank you. I believe that you all love what you do because you make the hard decisions. I thank you much.
Okay, then our final report is Superintendent Drake.
Good morning.
Good morning. Again, a reminder that we have breakfast and lunch being served for children eighteen years and younger in our community at Cleveland. Breakfast from eight to nine daily and lunch from eleven to noon. So I hope our community takes advantage of that. Much of my report really will focus on the changes taking place at Lincoln, which are considerable. The massive firewall that separates the north and south half of the structure, that started coming down last week. And that will change the feel and look aesthetically of that whole building once that's down. There's continued work going on on the exterior to the east side with connecting our driveway to Pioneer Road, curbs, et cetera. The concrete work going in on the east side for the circular drop-off and pickup area. And then the curbing that will basically frame the port surface playground area. So lots of stuff going on. This is a photo. This is, this goes back a little over a week ago. This is essentially a finished classroom. So there's kind of a wet area where students can do experiments and other STEM-type activities. And then part of it is carpeted, lots of cabinetry in there. All but two of the classrooms are exterior, so there will be lots of natural light. Entrance to restroom out there. Then this is the nurses station off the kindergarten office area. This would be on the left, the long hallway that is on the very north end of the building. So that's going from the old, basically from the corner, which was the old loading dock. And you're looking all the way to the west end of the building by the gymnasium on the far end of that hallway. Really like some of the finishes that were chosen, floor tile, the tile use for the restrooms, et cetera. Another photo of some of the tiling work. This happens to be part of the special ed suite. So you'll see that there's a shower area in there, et cetera, for students. Really a wonderful layout for that special ed suite. And then another really wonderful layout for our multi-tiered systems of support. So our ADSES, our title, our English as a second language, your ELL, English Language Learner Spaces, just a nice pod there for those support services. Ship date again on July twenty-third for the playground equipment. That will be the last phase of this project to be completed. The roofing should be just about done. They've had close to forty days of delay due to the rain that we've had this spring and early summer. Furniture should be delivered any day now. They can either stage that in the children's corner portion of the, an early childhood portion of the gym. Or if they are ready to start putting the furniture together, that can go straight into the classrooms at this point. So that'll be taking place this week. So that's real exciting. Last week, they were mounting the sound dampening panels in the gymnasium spaces, which will make a huge difference in there. That gym was very, very lively with sound before. And especially with some of the air handling work that was going through there. That's going to make a huge difference. So a really exciting time for the district. I can't wait for the community, our parents and children and our staff to enjoy it and to occupy it this fall. And we'll have to make some plans as a board to take a preview visit of the facility here in the coming weeks. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
We haven't talked about this yet, but are we gonna stage an open house specifically?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yep. So essentially, there'll be two open houses for that facility this fall. One will be for the parents and students that will be attending. And then we'll do a separate one, probably in close conjunction for the general community.
Maybe a tour after, during our retreat.
I was thinking possibly the retreat could be held out at that site, and we'll use our new training room out there. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, then we'll move into our general consent items. We have our minutes from our June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting and our bills report.
Yes, Melanie Ag came in early and sat down with Renee to go over. Kind of a light number of bills. There's only twelve pages of bills this month. See, off this particular meeting, we don't have any construction bills, so pretty short list to work with. Couple of highlights, we're workers' comp. Put the first payment in for the next fiscal year of twenty-three thousand. That'll be ninety-four thousand dollars when we're done. But Weilers did have to do a wall leak repair over at the wrestling room here in Kennedy. It was sixteen hundred dollars for that. And Dakota Playground that Superintendent Drake just discussed, we did pay the first half down of that, one hundred and eighty-two thousand. And we do have a grant request into five four four foundation. I think they're gonna meet on that second week of July. We had fifth-grade desks. We had to buy some new desks. Some of the, some of the classrooms were seeing double use, but with different teachers at different times of day. And so now when we're moving fifth grade back, we're seeing a need for some more desks because there'll be more classrooms. Food Services got new computers, and so that came under the Food Service Fund of about four thousand dollars. We're starting to put some sound tech, sound systems updating. Addams McKinley gyms to allow for us to dampen the sound of whatever's on there if there's any emergencies that we have to, or any other things that we have to use that PA system for. And that is about it. So about six hundred thousand dollars in general fund bills, and everything else was less than fifteen thousand. So a pretty light month. So thanks to Renee, other things in order as usual.
Thank you, guys. Okay, then we'll move to personnel.
All right, good morning, everyone. On our personnel, we have certified staff leave of absence, Sierra Rose Walls. She is an IQ elementary and social studies teacher. She's requesting a one-year leave of absence for the upcoming school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Certified staff hires, Bailey McKinney, Scott Meldahl, Heather Bukarski. You note that those were tier-one teachers that were terminated at the end of the last school year, and they're all in the process of getting their, receiving their licenses now for the new school year. So we would hire them back again. I would recommend that we hire them back again for the school year, just because of the protocol of their tier-one license. Scott Meldahl and Heather Bukarski will be moving to a tier-two. Heather did receive hers already, and Scott is in the process. Certified staff resignations. We have two additional music teachers. Last meeting, we had an elementary music teacher. And we have Dane Foylan and Kayla Tosh, both high school choir and band teachers. Individual contracts. Assistant Director of Special Education, Julie Domino. We had already approved her first-year contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And because of negotiations, we were just waiting to get everything settled for the second part of that contract, which we have. So she has signed that. So that's ready to go. And then my contract for the twenty-four, twenty-six school years. And then last, we have the support staff agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, excuse me, school year between us and Fergus Falls Food and Service Association. So I would recommend those for approval.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Our consent items are approved. We don't have any new business this morning, so we'll move into new business. We have our two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five Health and Safety Executive Summary of Written Plans. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Some move.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those are approved. We have a motion to award the fiscal year twenty-five milk bid to Cat Play Creamery in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. One hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-nine. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll move that we accept that bid.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That bid is approved. And then we have an award fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five bread bid to Panda Gold in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-seven. Can I get a motion to approve that bid?
Some move.
And a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have a resolution urging legislature to require Minnesota State High School Week to provide transparency with meetings and business-related materials. Be it resolved, MSBA urges the legislature to require that the Minnesota State High School Week record and livestream all Board of Director meetings and provide agendas and supporting materials to be made available to members of the public through electronic means. Someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution for its adoption.
I second that.
I third that.
Missy, will you take role, please?
Yes, I will. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Bigassa.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
So we have a resolution on the letter of engagement with Ida Bailey for fiscal year twenty-four Financial Audit Services.
This is just a motion. I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And then, Missy, will you take role?
Yes. Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Bigassa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
It was a motion?
Yeah.
Only a motion.
Yeah, of course, that was.
But it sounded right.
I just wanted to check.
It's just a motion, mixing it with roll call.
We're just following, following it.
It's like, it's like anchored, man. It just reads whatever.
Just checking.
Pretty true.
And did Matt second that?
Matt did.
Okay, thank you.
He stepped up to that.
Okay. And then we have a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-six Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Ten-Year Plan. Whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota Statute two thousand and twenty-two, section one twenty-three B, point five nine five subdivision four states, a school district or intermediate district must annually adopt and approve a ten-year LTFM facilities plan by July thirty-first for commissioner approval. Whereas the district, the school district has developed a ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistent with this law. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number five forty-four approves and adopts the attached ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan for fiscal year twenty-five on the twenty-fourth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four. Could someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Missy, take role, please.
I will. Stephen Bigassa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Okay, then we have a resolution of support to the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. Whereas for the first time in its twenty-five-year history, there are no U.S. Fish and Wildlife education staff employed in Fergus, in Fergus Falls at the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. And whereas positions have not all been filled following staff retirements for the reason that the U.S. Congress is failing to fund the United States Fish and Wildlife Services at a level to keep up inflation. And whereas while federal funding has been able to maintain the facilities, the budget is inadequate to pay for employees and utilities. And whereas not replacing retiring staff members has led to greatly reduced hours for both the visitor center and the Blue Stem Store. Termination of U.S. Fish and Wildlife staff led educational programming for preschool through college-level classes, visiting the center, and no longer offering preschool through sixth-grade summer nature programs. Residential experiences for upper elementary students, the junior friends of the prairie, and numerous special events for the public. And whereas of April, as April of two thousand and twenty-four, there will only be a maintenance staff member at the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. And whereas there is a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services to provide funding in written form with the city of Fergus Falls, who owns the buildings, and with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the partnership of Prairie site schools for fourth and fifth graders. Now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls Public Schools, School District five forty-four to adopt a resolution of support for the full plumbing into Prairie Wetlands Learning Center staff members and to preserve the regional community asset. Someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
And a second?
Second it.
And Missy, will you take role again?
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Bigassa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Okay. And we have one more resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent Districts, School District five forty-four State of Minnesota as follows. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of District five forty-four shall begin on Tuesday, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and shall close on Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the Office of the School District Clerk in the two-dollar filing fee prior to five o'clock PM on Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the official newspaper of the district at least two weeks prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. Number two, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the Administrative Office of School District at least ten days prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. And number three, the notice of said filing date shall be in substantially the following form. Notice of filing date for the election to the School Board Independent School District five forty-four, Fergus Falls Public Schools State of Minnesota. Notice is hereby given that the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District five forty-four shall begin on Tuesday, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and shall close at five o'clock PM on Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The general election shall be held on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. At that election, three members will be elected to the school board for terms of four years each. Adjudicates of candidacy are available from the School District Clerk. District Office Kennedy Secondary School, six oh one Randolph Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. The filing fee for this office is two dollars. A candidate for this office must be an eligible voter, must be twenty-one years of age or more on assuming office, must have a, have been a resident of the school district from which the candidate seeks election thirty days prior to the general election, and must have no other affidavit on file for any other office of the same primary or next ensuing general election. The affidavits of candidacy must be filed in the Office of the School District Clerk in the filing fee paid prior to five o'clock PM on Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. By order of the School Board, Missy Hermes, School District Clerk. Someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second, please?
I'll second that.
Missy, take role?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Bigassa.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
And our next school board meeting is Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven fifteen, followed by our school board retreat that same morning at eight fifteen AM. Can I get a motion to adjourn maybe this morning?
Some move.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.